Acres, forty-one Country Road, I have sought to purchase an additional acre of land from another abut. The variance, if granted, will allow sufficient time to affect the purchase of the additional acre, making it three point three four nine acre lot, and perform the required perk test. Thank you for your anticipated stated cooperation, and it's signed by Robert M. Herrick, seventy-five Osher Road, Lunenburg, Mass. So, I don't know if anyone has any discussion on this. He is asking for an extension of one year for the special permit that we have already granted.
I think it seems reasonable, where it's only been three years, and if you can't get a poor perk, the next best thing is to try to do something in the surrounding area. Does he have to own it before, or can he get a perk before he purchases it?
That I don't know, but he, this certainly won't take effect until he had it, correct?
Right.
That's his problem.
It's family property.
I would think it'd be advisable to say that we would like to have you try and get a perk before, you know, and grant you the permit.
Yeah, the extension.
The extension.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I would be in favor of the extension to hopefully allow him to get a usable lot.
If there's no more discussion, then I'll accept the motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant him an extension, and because of the timing and the year, I'd say reasonable for two years.
He's asking for a...
One year.
One year.
But I think two years might even be more reasonable, given this time of year, because if it doesn't perk now, the best time to perk, I think, is in the fall, right?
They perk year-round now. They do it year-round.
They do it year-round now.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we grant the motion for...
Right.
Okay.
And he can always still come back.
Right.
I'll second.
Okay, is that a call for a vote? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the extension is granted.
So Sheila will not vote tonight? Is that okay? Sheila won't vote tonight for the next hearing?
You sure?
Okay.
Okay, seven. It's close enough. Okay, and it's seven o'clock, so we will go right into the next petition. Again, I'd like to welcome everybody to the zoning board of appeals. I would like to notify you on how the hearing will be held. First of all, this hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law and broadcast over Lunenburg public access. I'd like to introduce you to the board members. To my left is Cheryl Loomy, Lisa Normandin, our secretary. This is Jim Bezakowski, Hans Winterk, Paul Dougherty, and Dave Blatt. I'm Al Gravel. The way it will go is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communication, and the applicant will have the opportunity to comment on the application or submit additional documents. You would please come forward to the mic and give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions that they might have on the application while you were at the mic. We will have a public comment period, and again, if you would like to comment, you must come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and please address all comments and concerns and questions to the board. The board will then go into deliberation. This is a special permit to vary dimensional requirements, so there are additional findings that I'm going to read. These are the findings that we must find. The permit may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. The specific site is in appropriate location for such building or alteration. The proposed building or alteration is compatible with the existing neighborhood in regard to size, location, and architecture. The granting of the special permit will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The granting of the special permit will not unreasonably diminish available light, air, sunlight, and other amenities, and there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. And with that, I would ask Lisa, please read the petition.
This is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, zoning board of appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Robert Berry, one nine one Cross Road in Lunenburg. The undersigned is seeking a special permit to install a twenty-three point zero four KW ground mount array on an eight point two acre lot. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section eight three two one B four. The street address is one nine one Cross Road in Lunenburg, assessors map one twelve, parcel fifty-nine, and the name and address of legal holder of the title to the land, which is the subject of this case, is Robert D. and Lisa A. Berry of one ninety-one Cross Road in Lunenburg. And the deed is recorded in Worcester Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book eight eight six one, page two seventy, and recorded July fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen. The special permit questions are as follows, and I will follow with the answers. A. Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The reply is, the proposed action will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons. B. Will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The reply is, this action will not have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood. C. Will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use? C. Yes, the proposed action will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness. D. Will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? D. The proposed action will not produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal uses of adjacent properties. And the petition was signed on July thirty-first by Robert Berry, one nine one Cross Road in Lunenburg. There is a list of abutters attached. All were notified two weeks prior to the hearing. There is a site map, the field card from the board of assessors office, and a site plan showing where the proposed array is going in relationship to the lot lines. I also received prior to the hearing from one of the abutters, we support the petition of Robert Berry, and it's signed Roy Hall III and Jane R. Hall. And I also received a memo from the Lunenburg Board of Health agent dated eight twenty-three seventeen that says he has no issues, and that's signed by James Giriffey of the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay, and before I invite the applicant up, I just want to make sure that everyone understands what we're doing. This is a petition seeking a special permit for a dimensional variation to install a twenty-three point zero four kilowatt ground mount solar array, which is considered under Section four point one five, a large-scale ground-mounted installation as the capacity is greater than ten kilowatts. So, under a large-scale ground-mounted system, it can be located on a lot containing more than twenty acres in any district with a special permit issued by the planning board. The reason that they are here is because they need a special permit for the ZBA for dimensional variation to install a twenty-three point oh four kilowatt ground mounted system on an eight point two acre lot. So, again, they still have to go to the planning board, they still have to go through all of that with them. A lot of our concerns are the same as theirs, but I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that we're here because of the lot size, and of course, all of the setbacks and everything else that applies. Thank you. And with that, I would invite the petitioner to come up, or the applicant, to speak if they would like.
Good evening. I'm attorney Robert Bowen here on behalf of the applicant. With me here tonight are several people that we hope can address questions that the board has. We have representatives from the solar company who will be doing the installation, that's one eighty South. We have representatives from the manufacturer of the product, that's Hebert Solar, so they're here as well. And also are the property owners, the Barrys, are here tonight. I think Mr. Gravel has aptly put it, what we're trying to focus here on tonight is one piece of a larger puzzle. We're here for the dimensional variation, we still have to go before the planning board, and they will address a number of broader issues in the context of the application for the special permit, but they wanted us to start here first. I think it's important to note that our understanding is that when this bylaw was first developed, the solar products were very different, and the capacity of the panels was not as great as it is today, so that a much larger array would have been needed to accomplish the same thing. So, we think that's part of the motivation behind the twenty acre lot size to begin with, because these products needed to be bigger. They don't anymore, but nevertheless, there's still, in the bylaw, there is still a twenty acre requirement, so we are here looking for a variance from it. We have eight point two acres. Not directly relevant, but Mr. Berry wanted me to give you a brief history of how we got here, because he has suffered kind of a hardship to get us to this point. He engaged a previous solar company and paid them large sums of money. They led him to believe that he was already permitted, not your problem, I understand, but then in reliance on that, he went out and purchased the panels, so he'd have them ready to go. So, he's already got a large cash outlay into this, thinking that he was permitted, and then when that company went under, he learned that he does not have his permit, and that's why we're here today. The other thing that I want to highlight, and I think it's important, we're here because of the size of the system, and that's what the bylaws require, but this is not, like many of the other projects in town, a commercial enterprise. This is the Barrys installing solar on their property entirely to consume it on their property for their private use. This isn't, this isn't a commercial enterprise, and I think, although we have to follow the same criteria, I do think that's important to note. I'm going to turn it over to one eighty South and Alan Robertson to address the technical aspects of the plan, but before I do that, if the board has any questions of me, otherwise, I'll return later at the end and make a brief closing statement.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? The attorney will... Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I'm Alan Robertson. I work in operations for one eighty South, also co-owner. I am ready to talk about any technical questions you have regarding the array. I'm open to just seeing what questions you have, but obviously, as you can see from the design, it's six separate trackers, total of seventy-two modules. They're actually, I used to work for the manufacturer of the modules, they're the most powerful modules in the world, so that's why we can get away with a lot bigger system and a lot smaller footprint. So, I can answer any questions regarding maybe inverters, they're AC modules, so all the modules are by law an AC appliance.
Could you go over all of the dimensions of the, where it's going to be, how large it's going to be, the heights, every, all of the dimensionals?
So, they're six separate trackers. At their tallest point, which is during the winter, when they have to tilt to get the most indirect light, they're going to sit about fifteen and a half feet tall. They're about two hundred feet from the southern edge of their property, of the Barrys' property, about two hundred and fifty feet from the east edge, about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and forty feet from the west edge, about five hundred, or about five hundred, four hundred, like seventy-five feet from the north edge.
Okay, so, so there is a two hundred foot setback, and so you're well within the two hundred feet?
Well within, yeah.
On all side, front, back?
That's correct.
Thank you. And the height was fifteen and a half feet?
At its max height, yep.
Okay, and what's the total area that this takes?
So, there's six separate trackers. It's odd to calculate area, you can do that in a few different ways. Each one sits on a pole, so the actual area they're taking up is no more than six, you know, eight-inch poles or one-foot poles. The actual square footage of each array is going to be twelve modules, and each module is about fifteen square feet, sixteen square feet, so.
Set as a three by four?
Exactly. Well, roughly.
Well, the array is three by four.
The array, yes, is three by four modules, yes. I thought you were doing feet of each module.
That's about fifteen by twenty.
Yep.
I got a question, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
When you apply for a special permit, you have to answer four questions, A, B, C, and D. Question D. Will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? Could you tell me how you determined that these panels would not create any glare observable at the lot line, please?
Sure. And again, I used to work for Sun Power, which is the manufacturer, and not all modules do this. Most of them in today's market do, but they're, they come with what's called AR glass, anti-reflective glass, and they're for a number of reasons. One, for efficiency, so it's not reflecting any light, because obviously it wants to absorb that light, and two is for aesthetics. So, often the FAA looks for anti-reflective glass, if you're installing these things near an airport. These, not only do they have anti-reflective glass, it's probably the highest-end anti-reflective glass on the market. So, I've done a number of glare studies back when I worked for the manufacturer, and we've never had a problem for glare for budding properties or anything of that nature.
Do you know what percent of, you know, the sunlight at every given moment is absorbed by the panel versus how much is reflected?
You can do that calculation in a number of different ways, but these particular modules convert about twenty-two percent of the, of the sunlight into usable energy. It absorbs, I don't know how much it absorbs as far as a fraction of overall light. The glare given off by these modules is significantly less than that of, like a standard window. It's the, the surface is dimpled such, like, kind of like a golf ball, so it reflects, refracts most of the light. So, the glare off these things is significantly less than, you know, a window you'd find in a house.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
So, I need to, I'd like to go back to the dimensions that you have.
Sure.
So, you're showing on the plans, I mean, I appreciate you saying the dimensions, but on the plans you've submitted, there's no dimensions, right? You don't have a dimension of how far from the property line, you don't show how far that is from the abutters' house.
Mm-hmm.
You don't actually show the dimensions of the array, or anything of that sort for us to look at.
Sure. So, the dimensions of the array, I guess you're right, in the spec sheet of the actual tracker?
What I'm saying is that, I'm having difficulty, because I, you know, usually with part of this, we look for a plot, a plot plan.
Sure.
Where the array is on the lines, and where, where, how this would have, you know, you're asking us, we're asking to be judged on how this affects the abutters.
Sure.
It's really the key, one of the keys, we think.
Mm-hmm.
I at least personally think, and that's what we, it's kind of lacking in what you've provided for us, that, all that information, information's lacking, as well as I think I have a few abutters here that would like to probably understand that as well.
Sure. And that information, obviously, would be somewhat tricky to provide right now without my CAD, but I could, I could definitely put that together.
Thirteen feet by thirteen feet.
Thirteen feet by thirteen feet for the actual particular, the trackers.
Each array.
Each array. So...
So, are they budding next to each other, the arrays? Are they in a straight line? Are they set two by three? Are they set...
They're in a straight line, and each individual tracker, I think, is roughly fifteen or sixteen feet apart from each other.
So, if we're looking at that, I'll tell you, just use fourteen as a number, fourteen, sixteen, that's, so we're almost like a hundred foot, you're looking at at least a hundred feet, oh, close to a hundred feet worth of panels.
So, if there's six arrays, four, three, four, five, six, so that would be one, two, three, four, it'd be five gaps in between each tracker, though, so five times fourteen.
Five times fourteen, so you're already up to, what's that, seventy?
Yep, seventy feet.
Plus the six times things, so it's over, over a hundred feet of panels that they're looking at.
So, while the poles will be about fifteen feet apart.
Right, but the panels, the concern is the panels. I mean, the poles, I'm not worrying about, it's that the neighbors have to see them.
So, the overall distance from the edge of one module to the edge of the farthest module is going to be no more than, no more than ninety feet or a hundred feet?
About a hundred and twenty feet.
It's going to be, it's going to be a little bit less.
No, actually, it's going to be more than a hundred and twenty feet.
I believe it might be less, just because the footings are about seventy feet wide. You're only getting about five feet on either side for the actual modules, because the modules sit, the footing is directly beneath the array. So, the footings take up about seventy feet, and then you're going to get an overhang of half of one array on one side, so that's about ten feet or fifteen feet.
We just heard that the arrays were sitting sixteen feet apart.
Mm-hmm.
So, that was telling me that there's a gap of sixteen feet between arrays.
The footings are sixteen feet apart.
The footings are sixteen.
And these things sit above the footings.
No, I understand that part. And to me, it doesn't matter if they were sitting on poles, they're sitting on the ground.
Sure.
Or anything. I'm trying to understand for the abutter, how large this array is, okay? Now, we're not all solar panel installers, so I understand, you guys know this well, but how large is this array? Is it fifteen feet long? Is it seventy feet long? Is it a hundred feet long? How wide is it going to be? Because we're trying to determine how much this is going to affect the neighbors.
Sure. So, yeah, it's probably about a hundred feet wide.
Okay.
There's gaps, it's six individual trackers.
Each array is thirteen feet by thirteen feet.
You have to come to the microphone and identify yourself, if you're going to speak, please.
Each array is thirteen feet by thirteen feet, but, and excuse me, David, maybe I'm misunderstanding you, but it sounds like you think there's going to be a hundred feet of solid panels. There's, there's pretty sizable gaps in between each one. So, you're looking at a thirteen-foot by thirteen-foot array, and then a big gap, and then a thirteen by thirteen-foot array. So, there's six thirteen-by-thirteen-foot arrays. There is no hundred-foot-long array.
There's no hundred-foot-long array, but I think what he's saying is, it's over a hundred feet, including the gaps.
Correct.
End to end.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think what Dave's asking for, and what's one of the things that I was looking for in the application that I didn't find, is that meets and bounds of the property line.
Thank you.
Where your, your array is going to be in relation to the abutters in the neighborhood, so we can see, okay, you're in the two hundred-foot buffer, you're on the two hundred and fifty-foot buffer, but we want to see, specifically myself, I want to see a plan, and it's, and it's required for, if it was to pass this board, you would need that plan stamped by an engineer anyways for the planning board.
Exactly.
So, I'd like to see a plan, and I haven't seen in the application, of where your arrays are going to be with those dimensions in relation to where the abutters are. And so that was one of my concerns that I had, Mr. Chairman. So, I just, I think it was just piggybacking off what Dave was asking. I think he's asking, usually typically, the applicant comes with a meets and bounds.
Sure.
So, we can actually see where you're, you know, not that we don't take it for your word, but we want to see where the, where the, you know, I'd want to see where the solar panels are going in relation to where the property is and in relation to where some of the specific abutters are.
That makes perfect sense, and it's something I could whip together relatively easily. Our CAD operator so helpfully put in that it meets those setbacks, but you're right, it'd be helpful to have exactly how far away from each individual.
Well, it's going to be required for the planning board, but I think for myself, I would need it to be able to look at that myself in order to make a determination.
No, you are correct, and that's, that's why I originally asked about all the dimensionals, because I too noticed that they were not on here.
That makes perfect sense, yep.
Okay.
I had another question, but I don't know if it's necessarily technical in terms of, Mr. Solar.
Feel free.
One of the things I had was, you know, so we have the bylaw where, you know, anything over ten kilowatts, I guess, is considered a large scale. Twenty-three is, can you, can you just address why that's, it seems pretty big in terms of, okay, you know, when the, when we, when they issued the bylaws, they had specifics in terms of metrics, you know, ten, twenty. Can you address why that twenty-three is so big for a residential house?
Yes, the way we size these is obviously per consumption. So, this particular array meets about ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent of their consumption needs, and in fact, if we weren't going the tracker route, the system would have to be about forty-five percent larger if it's fixed and not moving. So, modules, let's say about five, ten years ago, actually, five years ago, the most efficient module on the market was sub-three-hundred, it was like maybe two hundred and ninety watts. These are three hundred and twenty-seven watts apiece. So, technology's come a long way in the last five years. So, yeah, this is a larger residential array, but it barely meets their consumption needs today. So, yeah, it's basically how we made the design.
So, is there a business at this address?
No.
That's for residential?
Residential use only.
I'm sorry for the resident, then.
Yeah, it's a lot of consumption, but it's a big house, so.
Even having a big house, that, that, never that high.
And twenty-three is not outrageous. I've done residential designs, maybe around a hundred of them in this range. I've done them in North Andover and Ipswich and ground mounts all over. An average-sized system in Massachusetts for a module of this type is around ten KW, but that's average size, it's, you know, two thousand square foot home. So, for this particular home, it's not abnormal. I think their consumption profile matches that of a home of its square foot.
So, I'm not sure we've had, this board is, for as long as I've been here, I don't think we've had, so these, these panels are actually moving.
Yes.
They're not, not just sitting there.
That is correct.
So, that brings me to my next question. So, I did a site visit of the property, and I went out to the, to the back, and, you know, I'm looking at your, you know, the plan that you gave us here in the application. So, one of the concerns that I have is always about the abutters and the effect of the abutters, and so when I'm back there, you know, specifically the, the abutter, I think it, I think he's on Lancaster Ave, directly behind that.
Mm-hmm.
If you're saying that this, this solar array is going to be fifteen and a half feet at height, you know, he's looking at his backyard, and he's going to be looking, he's looking up at these, at these panels. I mean, how high is that going to be for him, do you know? Like, in terms of a distance?
I have the foggiest idea, no. We do have photos, if you would like to see them, from exactly the point of view towards the closest abutter, from every individual proposed position from the trackers. I can give those to you.
You can give them to the chair, yeah.
Lisa, I want you to pass them.
I mean, that was one of the concerns that I had, because I'm, I'm always cognizant of, you know, the effects of the value on, on the abutting property, and, you know, from looking at it and the height of the solar arrays, and he's, you know, his view is now the house, but, I mean, he's going to be looking at some solar arrays. And I also noticed, yeah, that was one of the reasons why I wanted the meets and bounds, because I, you know, there were some trees, you know, rows of, I guess, evergreens that I didn't see on the plan that I saw on site when I was there.
Exactly, yeah.
And that rebar that was there, what's that signify? Does that signify where those, where those poles are going to go?
Every individual six tracker, that is correct, yep. So, as you can see in the photos, the hill takes a bit of a dip, so, sort of, maybe doing the math of how high this would sit above, maybe, so lookers, lookers up, might be a little deceiving, just because even if these are sitting fifteen feet above the ground, the hills sort of obstruct some of the view. I think maybe one, if not two, of the trackers will be visible outside of that tree line as well.
Okay, I don't, I don't have any more questions right now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I didn't visit the property, but I did go online and look at a video of the property.
Seen the same video?
Supposedly, I guess, a drone.
Yep.
From a previous real estate deal.
Mm-hmm.
And, of course, you couldn't see quite as much, and that's what I was trying to find in that video, was the nearest abutter, but I really couldn't quite see.
So, when I went down to the nearest abutter, and I think it's at, I just want to make sure I'm right.
Uh, parcel sixteen, I think it is.
It's seven twenty Lemonster Road. So, when you're, when you're down in his driveway or near his driveway, what you're doing is you're looking up. Right now, he's got the view, but, I mean, I'm assuming that that's going to be blocked with solar arrays, you know, and, and not only do you have the height of the arrays, but you also have the topography. So, that's, that's what I'm concerned about, because it could affect the value of his land by this applicant putting up solar, solar panels. So, I'm cognizant of that, and I just, I'm curious, you know, perhaps if, when you do your meets and bounds, if you can figure out some way the dimensions of what, you know, that, that particular abutter will be looking at.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, definitely, I can...
Because I know one of the things in the, in the, you know, the, the planning board is screening and...
Right, and even, and even we would be looking for buffer zone. We would be looking for something that would take, you know, be a buffer to that neighbor.
And that's something that we've done, or I've personally done, I've been doing this for many years in the past, and the property owners have always, have already expressed that they would be willing to do something along those lines if, if it came to it. You saw the trees that they already planted. You saw the trees that they already planted.
But we would, we would actually, the two things now, if, we would condition the 200-feet setbacks.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, you, I take your word, but this is why we would need a plan with it on there.
Sure.
But we'd also condition it. It would be a condition of it.
Yep.
And the other thing would be, you know, any other condition we put on, which would be such as this, would be a buffer.
Yep.
To that particular neighbor, if we felt it appropriate, depending on what information you give us.
Correct, yep.
Any, any other questions?
I, I agree, meets and bounds is really necessary to actually even think about a decision.
Makes perfect sense.
Does, do you have anybody else that's going to speak tonight?
Not that I'm aware of, sure.
Could you identify yourself, please?
My name is Tom Harrington from 180 South Solar, I'm sorry. So this is what's called a dual-axis tracker. So not only does it follow the sun this way, but it also tilts. You know, the tilt varies all day based on the sun angle. So there is very little time that this thing is going to spend at a 15 and a half-foot height. You know, at 15 and a half feet, the array is almost straight up and down. Better than 50% of the time, the array is going to sit a lot more flat at more like a 10 to 12-foot height. So I don't, I just wanted to clarify that in case you all weren't clear on the technology we're using.
So have you been, have you been to the site?
Yes.
And do you know what the abutter I'm talking about, towards the, down, down the hill?
Yeah, the one behind the evergreen.
Right, so when he's looking out his, you know, back window, right now, he sees the hill, and then the house.
Right.
And, and I think where you're proposing the solar panels, now he's going to be looking at solar arrays.
Yeah, there, there's no doubt he's going to see the arrays, but, you know, that, the height of them is not always 15 feet, is all I wanted to point out.
Right.
And they're actually at the highest point very little amount of the time.
So, so it's actually the opposite, because you've mentioned that they are going to pivot as well, and that's more the concern, is the pivot, is the fact that at times, they could be looking at even a, a larger style of the array. They could be actually looking, will they, is there a point where they're looking directly at the panels at any point?
Yeah, because they're, they're south of the array.
Right, so that's what we're saying, is that, you know, what you're giving us is only, you know, you really need to come back and have something a little bit more concrete so that we can make it, you know, some kind of determination on how this affects the abutters. You're asking us to really affect the whole neighborhood on, on this right now, with very little information, except for your word that it's not going to sit at 15, I don't even care.
No, no, I, I, I'm clear on that, I just wanted to make sure every, everyone was clear that they don't constantly sit at that height.
Actually, I'm more, I'm actually more concerned with this, going, you know, looking at, so now the gentleman that's sitting out of his kitchen window is looking directly at a set of panels, because they're pivoted towards his house.
Yeah.
You know, that's even worse. I mean, at least if it's a stationary array sitting on the ground, fine, we can do some shading.
If it was a stationary array, it would be pointed right at his house 100% of the time.
So you...
Because a stationary array, you're going to face due south.
So I guess then that's the question, is, is there a reason why this isn't on the, on, on a different part of the property that would be more, like, more beneficial to the, to the neighbor that's the closest to butter?
There's no other place they can fit on, on the property.
I guess, yeah, I need to...
Because you, you want to, you want to get them out in the sun.
Right, but, okay.
So.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak? Does anybody from the public would like to come up and speak?
Mark DeBonus, 720 Lemonster Road. I just want to question the board, and an approval of a system like this, it's an industrial-type sized system, I'm not going to question the engineering of why it's 24KW, but it's a large industrial-type system, and the decision that you make has precedent over the community that we love. That's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak, say anything? Anybody for, against, anything you'd like to comment on? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Susan Rowe, 710 Lemonster Road. I just want to say where you're looking at putting, where you're looking at putting this as a pristine area. It's just as you enter town, there's farmland, it's really beautiful. I consulted with someone who lives in town, who's been doing solar for 20 years, and when he looked at the plans, the first thing he said was, wow, that's a lot of power. The other things he addressed were the fact that the plans are not to scale, which I think you've addressed. He said that the plans are addressing a 2014 NEC code, and right now, there are 2017 NEC codes that are different. He said the plan exceeds 15 kilowatts, so the code demands a professional engineering stamp, which it doesn't have. He'd like to know if Madison Contracting has done soil testing, because the helio, helios attachments that they're putting into the ground are not good for this kind of soil. We have clay, he said it's really hard in the summer, but in the winter, it's like jello, and those things can go over. The other thing, and the plan that I got that was submitted to you earlier this week did have some dimensions on it that you were asking, by my dimensions, my calculations, it looks like it's about 200 feet across, because it says that the panels are 15 and a half feet wide, and the space between them is 20 and a half feet. Well, just between the panels is 20 and a half. So he had a lot of concerns about the plans that were here, and I have concerns, I can't tell you how many people have said, we just know we're home in Lunenburg. When we come home and we see this beautiful pastoral area, and as you're coming over that hill, you will see those big panels up on the hill. And if you, as Mark said, if you give variance to this, anybody else in that area could have variance, and you could have, you know, little farms popping up there. Where in Lunenburg, I think we really like the, the rural area. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, we'd welcome anybody else that would like to speak. Okay, if nobody else would like to speak, I think what we would like to do at this point is maybe continue this hearing till we get new plans with the dimensionals, with the heights, with the actual layouts, with the setbacks, and all, is there anything I'm missing that you would like to see included in this?
I'd like to see more of a study of how often it would face the neighbor to the, let's see, northwest, to the west, I guess, would be.
Okay. The time periods of how these things would face, in what direction and where, so that he can address the abutters. Any other information that you would need?
So, you know, what I, I think would be helpful, in addition to the meets and bounds plan, and I don't know if this is feasible or not, but, you know, sometimes they'll tether a little balloon to it. I'm, I'm, I'll be honest with you, I'm, one of the, one of the thresholds that we have is the value of the properties, the adjacent properties, and right now, what, you know, after my site visit today and looking up that hill, and having this array, you know, even though it may not be at 15 and a half feet all day long, it's going to be at 15 and a half feet at some point. And the abutter is going to directly be looking out their window at it. So I'm trying to determine, you know, if you have to have evergreens or, you know, I mean, there was a nice row of, of shrubs planted, but I'm trying to figure out in my head, is that going to be a, you know, if they wanted, if the abutters were saying, hey, you know, to be a good neighbor, are we talking about a 15-foot tree? Are we talking about a 10-foot fence? I mean, I want to be able to visualize how tall this thing is going to be in order to shade the abutters from the particular solar arrays.
A couple of responses. I think also, if you've been out there, there's already, as I understand it, there's an airport morning beacon tower already up there that extends maybe 100 feet in the air.
I saw that, yep.
So, so there's our, there's already something there. And then, and I appreciate your questions, and I appreciate what this board has to consider, but I'm trying to make sure we're not trying to serve two masters here, and as, as some of you have already noted, the planning board, in the context of issuing the special permit, is going to be looking at those sightlines and the 200-foot buffer strip, and attaching all sorts of conditions. So I want to make sure...
That is correct, but we have our own conditions that we have to meet.
I do, and I just want to make sure we're sensitive to the fact that we've got two boards that are going to be looking at the same thing, and I'm...
Correct.
I'm trying to figure out how we come out of this not looking at two separate sets of conditions.
Well, again, I think that you're not looking at two separate sets of conditions, and I can assure you, the planning board will be looking at the same conditions we're looking at.
Right, right, exactly.
But you're here first.
Sure.
So we need to satisfy those conditions here.
Absolutely.
First. Not just say, oh, well, maybe the planning board will look at it. We can't do that.
Sure.
You know, we have certain findings on special permits that have to be met.
Absolutely.
And to have the information we need to meet those findings. So that's why, you know, we, we need to have this information.
Absolutely. So when would you like to have us back?
Lisa.
Two weeks from tonight, 7 o'clock?
Two weeks from tonight, 7 o'clock.
Two weeks from tonight? Perfect.
Okay, the date is...
27th? 27th?
What is it?
Today's the 13th, yeah, 27th.
Okay, the 27th at 7 o'clock, we'll continue this hearing till then, and you should be able to provide us with the information we asked for at that time, and we will continue the hearing.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully before the hearing.
Yes, you have to get that information to us, please, before the hearing, so that the board can have time to look at that information pre.
How long? When would you like it?
When, when do you think you could have that ready?
I need the plan in a couple of days.
Couple of days, so, so if...
A week before the hearing.
If we need it, we'll expect them a week before the hearing.
I can say at least a week before the hearing.
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
And those will be available if you would like to look, anybody else would like to look at them, and Lisa will have them in the zoning deposit.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, those, that, that plan will be a stamped plan, because...
That will be a stamped plan.
The planning board's going to need it anyway, so it's, you're not doing double duty, you're going to do it for us, and, and you're going to use that plan for the planning board anyway, so.
Stamped plan, we'd take you a few more days. Obviously, the, I'll be actually...
Okay.
Take space.
So do you want, do you want two weeks, or do you want more time?
I can do it in two weeks, we're getting you all this up, maybe full prior, might be a little tricky. I can get an unstamped plan of all setbacks, but stamped drawing, generally PE doesn't stamp, like directional drawings, so I'm going to be getting a PE stamp for the structural footings, to address this little issue about overturn of the installation. But for the land use and setback, I may not need that, obviously, because...
You need to come up.
Overturn of the array has nothing to do with the amount of land we're using, but the, I, I actually, I can get a surveyor's stamp, so not a professional structural engineer, but a surveyor's stamp, if that would help, or...
Yeah, that would, yeah, the surveyor's stamp is fine.